I don't see a red light up there. Thank you. I just didn't want-
Forgive me, thank you.
No, no, I just-
I hit the button.
I know, I know, but I didn't see the light, so-
We gotta check the mayor's word, too?
Yes.
Remember to push the red button?
It's touchy some days.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, no, I appreciate the catch. First item on the agenda, review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to share them. Otherwise, I'd look for an approval of the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would take care of the minutes. We've got two public hearings tonight, both are conditional use permits for fences. The first is for the Embrock property.
All right, I'll just bring it up here on the screen. This is at 606 Twenty Second Street Northeast. Property owner is Cody and Veronica Embrock. This is the plan that was submitted with their application. So just a pretty standard situation going on here. Fence is built out to each of the three property lines, the sides and the rear. Fence has already been built, but we're moving forward with the retroactive application here. So just pretty standard conditions of approval that we're recommending for this one. The access agreements and then the acknowledgement of the easement.
Thank you, Ian, any questions for Ian? Now I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone has anything they'd like to say on the conditional use permit for the Embrock fence, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium, please. Mr. Norrie, sure would love to hear from you, but please stay on target, if you would.
Of course. Thanks for welcoming me. The only concerns I have about this conditional use permit on this fence is that I believe it should suggest that the property owners and the builders get legal advice regarding an access agreement that be filed that would affect the deed of their property, either if they draft their own or if they use the city agreed form. I believe that should address ownership of the fence, which would prevent, say somebody bought that property down the road, they'd understand they own the fence and they got the right to take it down. Right now, it would be very unclear if the next person bought the property who owned the fence and that should be something I think we should be in a basic fence agreement. And a Plan B, in the event the neighbors don't sign the agreement. It's been brought to my attention about 25% of the time that doesn't happen. It's a high probability that could happen. So I think there should be a Plan B. I guess the fence is already built, so what if the neighbors don't comply? I mean, is anybody gonna make this fence get torn down or is it good to go? Those are my only comments that I have on it, guys. Yeah, the biggest one is that the owner of the fence and the neighbors all get legal advice if they do anything to affect the deed of their property with an access agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
Michael Ochman, is that a defense company, Ian?
Yeah, the company is like Ochman-
Okay.
Remodeling.
Just checking that.
Yeah, Ochman is the builder, yeah.
All right.
Counselor, my name?
Please.
Good evening. My name is Todd Livingston. I live at 604 Twenty Second Street Northeast. I first made this acknowledgement of the fence when I came home from work one day and some workers were there putting up the posts. I noticed it was pretty close to the line, so that was my wife's nice concern, just to let you know. I brought it to the builder's attention, asked them if they had a permit, if they were good. Because our realtor, when we bought the property just to the left of that screen there, bought it a year ago, he said it had to be about three feet, which I thought was weird. But after talking with some relatives, every city, as you know, is different. So I just talked with them and spoke with the owner, Mr. Embrock, and we've always had an amicable relationship. He has, only thing I had at the time is that being on base housing, we had our own share of responsibilities outside of the fence as far as mowing and weed eating and things of that nature. I had asked that he take care of it and to this day, he still has. He's been very good with the condition of it. But as the previous speaker just said, that's not to say what the next person may or may not do with it. And being as close as it is, I'm not gonna say it's on the line because Mr. Embrock and myself have looked at it pretty close and I would say it's about a foot on his side of the line. But I'm not a surveyist, I can't give the definite answer, it just looks that way. So we had a spoken agreement that I and my wife, who was very concerned about this, had no real main issues, I just wanted to make sure that this was on record and that you guys knew how we felt over at 604. However, we do have the same concerns as the previous speaker brought up. This is something that really should have probably been stopped by the city at that time, had they been made aware of it. A lot of people, casting this growing, not everybody knows how the ins and outs work. And I think that would be beneficial to all parties, especially down the road. So I just wanted to be here, and my wife and I stood, to say that we have no conditions at this time. However, I think it would be beneficial for all parties, myself included, to check further down the line, make sure everything is covered, especially by lawyers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please.
My name is Cody Embrocks, I am the owner of 606. When we first looked into putting the fence up, our contractors that we, who also had worked with the remodeling company, they told us that they'd take care of the contract or the permit. And then it was to my knowledge, I didn't get anything in the mail until the fence was already up, then you guys saying that this conditional permit need to be used. Well, I had no, I assumed that my contractor had taken care of it, which on my end, that is my fault for not looking into it. I just looked into my contractors and believed what they had said was gonna be the truth, you know? So I just wanted to let you guys know that as the owner of the fence, I am present and I am hoping whatever agreement we can come up to works, I'm willing. I've been in great contact with the neighbors from all ends of the fences and contact, just trying to give them the information I've learned as well. So I just, for record, I want to apologize for any of the inconvenience that this has caused. But I hope that we can come out and come up with an agreement of some sort. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergscher, you're the only person that hasn't contributed anything to the conversation. Did you have anything you wanted to share?
If you're listening tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that said, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
I guess the legalities of what we're getting involved here, I thought were largely assumed. If you felt like you needed legal advice on a topic, you would go out and find that legal advice or pursue that legal advice. I mean, at best, it could be a recommendation in the scope of any documentation that we're putting together with this particular process, but I don't think you can require somebody who wants to represent themselves, per se, in these matters to go out and get an attorney. But even with that point being made, the neighbors are talking and they're discussing these things and they're finding a path forward that works for everybody. So, once again, the underlying process we have in place seems to be chugging along a little bit and doing what we intended it to do.
It's difficult, I mean, when you're an owner and then you hire a company and you assume they are doing their job, especially what they say they're doing and what they're getting paid to do. So, I mean, when a company doesn't do it, he would be able to go back onto them and have them fix the problem. I mean, that's neither here nor there. But ultimate goal of this was to get people to talk, make sure they can put it on there, make sure it's maintained, make sure, and with it getting recorded with the deed, if I understand, I could be wrong, the whole purpose of that is for when you do sell, that shows there was an access agreement.
Well, I would assume the application for the conditional use permit in some small way, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, establishes some legal ownership of the fence. You can't apply for a conditional use permit on somebody else's property, per se. Maybe that, I don't know if it's blunt or implied, but either way, you know, the documentation has its value for that particular challenge.
As far as knowledge of the necessity of the permits, I would assume that the big home builders in town are aware of the permitting process, Bigelow and whatnot.
It should be, I mean, they certainly got the part.
Right, and as for the multitude of contractors, I don't know what we could do on our behalf to maybe make that more obvious, but it turns out that at least a realtor in the area at least knew the rules and I think the longer that we have the rules in place, it will become more apparent and more well-known. We have done a few, a significant number of these retroactive ones, I think. We, did we at least, did we stop one of them in progress? I don't know, defenses usually go up in a day or two, so it's really hard for us to-
Depending where we've had issues. We have a number over the last five years. We're able usually to find a path forward for them.
Yeah.
And a couple of them, you know, we utilized the, one was a visibility issue a couple of years ago. You'll remember off of Highway 57, there was a fence across the street from members of the neighborhood. We were able to find a way for them that would meet the code and the same thing's been true for the variety of them. At the end of the day, I mean, obviously, our goal is to be very transparent and that's what these hearings are really for, so people know what's going on.
Yeah.
And some people have built fences and they had to turn around and relocate them a little bit. So that's, we've gone through that process as well.
As to the permanent question, again, assuming that they get their required conditions met, I don't see anything wrong with this application.
May I take that as a motion to approve, sir?
Uh, yeah, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation to the city council, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is another conditional use for a permit for a fence, just like home.
All right, so this one here is for a commercial property on Main Street West. I'll pull up the plan here up on the screen so everyone can see. What they're proposing for this one is to just build a new fence kind of along their front property line there and then bring it down to connect to an existing fence, kind of down here. But since it's going to be at least three feet off of this side, we don't require an agreement with Mayo, that's the owner over here. And then since it's public right of way up here, there's no really need for an agreement. So really, for this one, there's not any conditions, but it still requires a conditional use permit because they're putting a fence that's on the property line, pretty much.
So the property line is the edge of the right of way that we're discussing?
Yeah.
It's a chain link fence, right?
Yep. So there aren't any transparency issues, it's not a private fence, so.
They're just gonna match what's already there.
Mm-hmm.
Are they planning on taking that other fence down or are they just gonna have that sectioned off?
Right.
You would think so, otherwise you've got a fence annoying getting into the property.
Well, or they're putting a gate in it and using two separate areas.
Or something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, that could be.
In daycare, you gotta have fencing.
If you have.
Any other questions or comments? Now I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for Just Like Home. If anybody has any comments they'd like to share, if they would be kind enough to come up to the podium, please. If not, I will close the public hearing. Maybe one of the simpler conditional use permits we have seen to this point in time.
There's no conditions, so.
And there's just not much to discuss, I mean, not-
Once again, the process is just for documentation.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. With that said, I would look for a motion, please.
I'd make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation for that conditional use permit. And the last item this evening is discussion of 154-312, fences and walls.
So, as we've had this ordinance in place for about three years now, we have a good reference of the process and how it all works by this point. Let's see here. So I included the ordinance as it's written today, just so you can all see every detail with that one. And then I did include a new version of the ordinance. And so it does include most of the things from the original one, but then there's quite a bit that's different as well. But when I was going through the original one, I just started, you know, moving things around, reorganizing, rewording some things, adding things. So that's why I have it in two different documents instead of just the marked up original version. But anyways, I'll just go through the ordinance that I have it as I do now. So new stuff right at the beginning is some definitions of a few different terms that are used throughout the ordinance. So now you have a definition for a fence, for a hedge and for a wall. And then probably the most important distinction here is the difference between an interior fence and a perimeter fence. So the interior fence would be anything that's constructed that's over, I put two feet from the property lines. And then with the exception being when someone wants to put up a fence and just connect to an existing one, but they don't build anything that's like parallel to the property line, it just connects perpendicularly, in which case you would need an access agreement in place. And then the second one is the perimeter fence. And so that's going to be anything built within two feet of the property line. And so because of that, they would require an access agreement. And then, let's see, I forgot to pull my notes. And then the B section in here talks about fences and hedges being located entirely on the property that they serve. And then it says, any fence or hedge obstructing an interior drainage easement or extending beyond the property line may be removed as the owner's request. Again, barbed wire and electric fences aren't going to be allowed except in industrial districts or where livestock is allowed. Fences and hedges shall be maintained and kept in a safe condition. The area between a fence and property line shall be maintained in attractive condition at all times. Then I've got things about keeping the decorative side facing the adjoining property, stuff about the clear set triangle regulations and the fence heights. So that would be different. The height measurements are the same as the original ordinance. And then the C section talks about the different approvals that are required. And so basically, not every, what I'm calling an interior fence requires, would require a permit. It would just be in cases where the fence is like within an easement or you're planning to put it within your front yard area. But if not, if it doesn't meet either of those conditions, then you wouldn't need the permit. Perimeter fences would always require a building permit, or fence permit. And then retaining walls, this is, I think, more of a building code question. But retaining walls over four feet in height require a building permit. And so that would get inspected by the actual building official, CMS, on that one. But those aren't very common. Let's see. And then the D section talks about standard sort of front yard fences, pretty much the same as what was in the original, just a little reorganized. And then I did add that, as it's defined in Section 150.02, corner lots can have more than one front yard area, but at least one front yard area should remain open and free of fences. And that was something that was brought up when we did the last revision for the corner lots and having privacy fences on those lots. Then the E section talks about the fence permit process itself, so this is totally new here. So again, perimeter fences and interior fences that require a fence permit, you have to complete the application and pay the fees. And then if you fail to do that and put the fence up anyways, there could be penalties. Penalties with that. E2 talks about the neighbor agreements, which in this ordinance would require that the agreements are executed before the permit can even be issued. They have to be written in a reportable format and signed by all the relevant property owners. That piece is the same as the original ordinance. And I say, the agreement shall include a clear assignment of responsibilities regarding construction, maintenance of the fence and the area between the fence and the property line. And then I do include some language about easement requirement in the cases where it's not like evenly shared between two property owners. This hasn't really come up yet since I've been here, but it's possible that two adjoining property owners might wanna build a fence together and then they would agree to like maintain their own half. It hasn't happened yet, but I just think there should be something in public for cases like that, if it's up to happen. And then I just say specifically, like a neighbor agreement isn't required when a fence borders a public right of way. So just like the last one we saw, we don't require an agreement if it's public right of way. And then temporary fences, that section is more or less the same, I just kinda shortened it, made it more straightforward, I would say. And then the non-
That's reworded a bit based on the guidance from the consultant planner.
So that's everything with the new ordinance language. And then, let's see, I also drafted a version of the permit application itself. So this is totally, totally new stuff here. But I think it does a good job of referring to the proposed ordinance language and making sure that all of those steps are followed. So Section 1 of the fence permit application, just pretty basic information there. But notably, you can mark off if the applicant is also the property owner or going forward, if we see more contractors applying for the permits similar to like a building permit you would see. Let's just sort of clear it that way. Section 2 asks for the fence type, so I've included the definition for interior fence or perimeter fence and then the conditions where you would need a permit for an interior fence. And then you can just mark which one you're building. And then I included a couple of fees there at the bottom. So as an example, a perimeter fence permit could cost $100 and an interior fence permit could cost 50. Now, perimeter fence is going to be more expensive just because there's more staff time that goes into reviewing those applications, whereas the interior fence permit applications are much more straightforward. Next page talks about the neighbor agreements. So I give people a couple of different options here. First option there is to allow city staff to use the, sort of the template version that we've been using up to this point. But it's going to be pretty minimal effort on the city staff's side, so all that would be changed is just names, addresses, PIDs and legal descriptions. And if there is anything beyond that that the neighbors or the applicants want to change, that's between them to figure out. And then the second option there is they can come up with their own agreement and present it with their application for a fence, just so long as this is from the code, but a clear assignment of responsibilities for construction and maintenance. And then the last option there is, in the case where your application may be exempt if you're building along a public right of way. And then fees for that one, the $4 or $6, that's just the recording fee that Dodge County charges whenever you record a document at a certain property. Section 4 is the fence plan, so you just have to mark if you're putting it in a front yard, rear yard, right side or left side yard. And then property lines, this part is unique. The applicant has to mark whether they're hiring a licensed surveyor, whether they're locating their property lines themselves, but that means that they're assuming the responsibility for the fence's location. Or another option there is presenting a notarized letter from your neighbors saying that they agree to the location of the shared property line. And then just have to attach the fence plan and then the city can provide the GIS printout like we've been doing up to this point. So that part's the same. Section 5, fence materials, this part is different, too. Basic materials, wood, vinyl, chain link, wrought iron or other types of metal, and other, if you get creative beyond that. And then the maximum height, I have it separated between like the rear and side yards versus the front yard just because those could be different depending upon what material, material, material you're building with. And then same for transparency as well, it's gonna be different between rear and side yards versus front yards. And then Section 6, just signatures, property owners and the applicant. And then based on what you got for a subtotal in Sections 2 and 3, that determines the final total of your building for that fence permit application. And then beyond that, I also included what I'm calling Supplement B, the neighbor agreement. So this is if the applicant gives the city permission to use their document. That'll be available for everyone to see and view beforehand so they can make that decision when, before they apply for the building permit. That's that. And then, let's see. Any questions?
I have a simple, I hope I have a simple one.
Yeah.
Is a snow fence a tempor-, is a snow fence a fence?
I would consider that probably like a temporary fence.
I don't know, given our weather in this part of the world, if asking somebody to remove a snow- remove a snow fence after 45 days, depending on what mother nature throws at us, is always going to be
Okay.
a viable request.
Yeah. So I think that was something you, I had proposed. Yeah, so I said, like, if you put up a temporary fence and it's up for more than 45 days, then you would have to apply for a fence permit at that point. Just an idea.
Yeah, I see you're looking at changing it from three feet to two feet?
Yeah, there are a couple of motivations behind that. One, I think, could probably reduce the amount of permit applications that we see come through, at least for the perimeter fences. Just because maybe people would be more okay with leaving a two-foot gap versus a three-foot gap, if they don't, if they're not able to go through the neighbor agreement route, just one thing there. Another thing is that if you make smaller lawn mowers that are maybe only 20 inches.
Seen 16s.
Or even smaller, 16 inches, so.
Okay. No, that was something I brought up earlier about changing that, so I'm fine with that.
Did you find prior other towns using two feet instead of three feet?
Every town is just so different. I mean, just offhand, I'm not sure of one that uses two feet specifically.
Under your draft fence ordinance revision,
Yep.
under B7, you've got it listed in there, and it could be confusing, where you says fences shall not exceed six feet in height as measured finished grade, and then you say fences in the front yard are three foot. Can you like make them two separate bulletin points to
Yeah.
to make it just clear that it's the front and, so it's not like washed together, so people don't get confused?
Yep.
And there was like, on your corner lot, D1C, you've got a reference to 150.02. Is there, on there, can you make that a link so they could get to that, to read it quicker? Instead of trying to get out of this and go to that, you know? Just making it streamlined for applicants to understand what we're looking at. And on your fence permit application, now, section three, is there, it says, we're calling it an easement. We want to just word that as an agreement, because it's not necessarily an easement. We're not asking them to give them easement to the property, we're just asking them to give them access.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I can see that. That's a good idea.
And then that kind of goes along with your access easement agreement on your draft supplement B. We would just call it an access agreement, because we don't want to give them anybody permission to have property, we just want them to, permission to go on there, maintain whatever. It might make it easier for them then, if it's.
Okay, yeah.
That's all I have right now. There might be more.
I'll start by tacking on in that section three, maybe right underneath the bold title and where the box starts, might be a good place to kind of put some legal words there, just like, you know, this neighbor agreement is a legally binding document.
Oh, sure, sure.
You know, you may want to seek counsel before agreeing to it.
Yeah, so one thing on this point.
And I think you added something in the actual agreement, if I remember right, but I think this is the application, this is the first thing they'll see going through the steps, so I think if we have it right front and center, that'll alleviate some of the concerns that we've had.
Yeah. So I did share all this with our consulting planner, and one thing that he did recommend is creating sort of a, we call it a fact sheet, and so that would just be a more, more like detailed version of like what it means to have a, something recorded.
Okay.
Why does it have to be notarized, that type of thing. I didn't draft one just because of that type of thing, but.
I think that would work too, assuming that these, that would be given out like as a
Yeah.
a cover, a cover letter to the application.
Yep. Yep, that was the intention.
All right, back to the ordinance revision. We talked about the corner lot a bit, I think the link would be fine. I think the last time we discussed corner lots, and in the previous fence ordinance, we had a line in there that said the preferred location for a fence would be the side, the preferred front yard definition would be the side with the street address. Which obviously is not required, but it's in there as, I assume, a recommendation. And if we want to take that out, that might be okay. But I think the last time we were talking about corner lots, I don't know if we did this or not, but we kind of left something in there where it'd be up to the planning commission to kind of veto somebody's decision if their decision of a corner lot just kind of was out of whack with the rest of the neighborhood.
They'd have to have the site plan reference, you know, too.
Right, so.
To make sure there was, there's no blockage of the site plan, you know, what I'm talking about?
The site triangle.
Yeah.
At the intersection, yeah.
That was part of that.
If that's covered in the fact that they have to get a permit and get a review somewhere before we're putting up a front yard fence, then that's fine. So I just wanted to make sure that that, because we've changed things around a little bit, so I'm a little unsure whether that, that's still happening. Gee, non-conforming fences, okay. So this almost looks like you copied it from the other one. However, you added one word in there, which I take a little bit of concern with, and that's improvement. So a non-conforming fence, blah, 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 may be continued or improved, but should not be expanded. And the word improved was not prior in there, and I think the definition of improvement might be a little too lenient, because what would you guys consider an improvement? Like, off the top of my head, taking a four-foot fence to a six-foot fence, is that an improvement?
Depends on the material and the cost.
And do we want to allow that for a non-conforming fence? Which in this case, I assume a non-conforming fence is one that was installed without an access agreement?
Yeah, I mean, typically, I think when we look at improvement, you know, for a deck or for siding or something like that, there's a, there's a metric that we use, you know, so many panels of siding or so many shingles or something like that, which is repair versus, you know, improvement.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that we definitely should look at.
So we either should clarify what we consider an improvement to a fence, or remove the improvement, and they're allowed to maintain, repair, the existing fence without the permit, or they got to get the permit to do an improvement, which I think is where I would lean towards, but.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, that's something to hash out.
Is an improvement anything that extends the useful life of the fence?
That could be, so.
I mean, if you had a wood fence and you had a couple of boards to replace, obviously, that would be maintenance, right?
That's maintenance.
Ultimately, you'll end up replacing all the boards, and that's extending the life, so I, that's where.
No, I think that's a good question to hash out and make sure that things are well defined that way, because you don't want to cause a question later on, it's a judgment call.
Right. Right, so that's what I had in my notes so far, so.
Anything else, Sheldon?
Ian, I noticed for the, the interior fence, so what was, or so it's perpendicular to existing fences, so what's sort of the intent that's trying to hit at?
Um, let me see if I can find a good example. So like, in this scenario, let's say that these outside fences were already constructed by their neighbors. And then Mr. Embrock only wanted to build like right here and right here. Now, technically, they are building within that two-foot distance, but I just don't know that an access agreement would be necessary because it runs perpendicular, and conceivably Mr. Embrock would be able to maintain the fence fully on his own property.
Oh.
And so in that case, it would fall under the interior fence distinction.
And are we, because perpendicular means 90 degrees, so if I build it at 89 degrees, you know what I mean?
Okay.
The first splitting hairs on it, so.
Not, not parallel to the property line.
Right.
He'll send that one right to planning.
Everybody needs to bring their protectors.
You know what I'm kind of getting at?
Yeah, yeah, I could.
Well, what's the intent we're trying to achieve with that definition?
Yeah.
And maybe we might wordsmith it a little bit to get better, or get closer to the intent.
Because basically, your intent is to say that you're just going from the house to the existing fences, and the property line that the neighbor put up. So you could call it a connecting fence to the existing fence on the neighbor's property. That would be simpler term. Which would make, then would be pretty clear too, I mean, you're connecting just a short distance to an existing fence on your neighbor's, on the property line of which your neighbor put up.
Yeah.
Or you put it up and you want to add to it.
Or yeah. Or you had it up.
You didn't want to put a gate on it.
And also you decided you wanted to put that little section to the front.
Well, you look at.
But if you put it up, you should have already had the permit for that. But if your neighbor put it up, and they had the permit for it, but now you want to disconnect that, I mean, you're going to talk to your neighbor and say, hey, can I do this? So that's kind of, the way I understand how you're saying it, Ian. If we, maybe we have to figure out how we can word that, but.
I think at the end of the day, we want to remember why we're looking at this, is to improve the process.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, teams have been through it for three plus years now, we'd want to see if there's any tweaks, and then try to simplify it for folks so that it can take as long.
Yes.
For it to cost as much. You know, we don't make any money on these, you know, the publication cost sucks up all the permit fees. You know, the fact that we have to publish it in the newspaper for a public hearing. If we can eliminate that, we can reduce the vast majority of the costs of this down, and if we can internalize some of the process, it makes it just faster for, you know, that's probably the biggest complaint that I hear, is why does it take so long?
Yes.
Truth is, well, it has to be published, and we only have one meeting a month, and the newspaper, it only comes out once a week. So I mean, there's those, you know, if you miss the, you know, you miss it by two days,
Now you're no more.
And so we want to try and eliminate that kind of bureaucratic red tape aspect of it as much as possible, I think. That's our goal, let's try and make it better for folks.
Did you have anything else, sir?
No.
That's all I got now, but I'll read more.
Well, and so what we can do is, you know, we can take it back, you know, Ian's got a lot of suggestions to work out, and we can talk about, look into them more, and then try and come back at a future meeting and have this, you know, draft for you. And then, you know, at the point where we're feeling comfortable with it, then we could board that up for a, for a public hearing, for, you know, for the ordinance, I think.
If I may, I'd also like to add a slight discussion on to this. I would like to propose a way for us to have perimeter fences constructed such that neighbor agreements would not be required. My thought about this is that not every type of fence requires access to the opposite side of the fence. I mean, a chain link is a good example, I'm pretty sure you can install a chain link on the property line without accessing the adjacent property at all. Obviously, the most common privacy fence that we're used to seeing is, with typical construction methods, that's not the way it's done. So my thought is, could we have an alternate process where an applicant could bring to us a proposal of a design where they can install a fence without trespassing on their neighbor's property? And obviously be able to install it, maintain it, repair it, and whatnot. And then allow them to go through a review process with us. I would also say we would want to condition that it wouldn't want to have to be on the property line, because of the maintenance issue, it can't be six inches off, right? Because you can't maintain the landscaping. And also, we would require a locate, right? Because obviously, if the neighbors don't want to give access agreement, we want to make sure that it's, we got something official saying that it was located correctly.
I mean, I guess when you say locate, you know, obviously, we talk about utility locates, that would be something they would do anyways. But I mean, what I'm getting from that would be a survey.
I don't know what the official thing is, because I've never done it.
So I mean, a survey would be something you'd require in that case, what you're saying, kind of?
Right. So if somebody wants to go through the process of getting an official survey, and can, can bring a design for a fence that can be installed without encroaching on their neighbor's property.
By an official survey, I would, if you're going to go this far, it'd have to be a, it'd have to be GIS survey, so it is pinpointed off of the satellite, not off of the pinpoints, because they, they, you, they can do surveys one way, but they're not official, they can say they're a survey, but a true land surveyor will use the GIS system for it.
I mean, I think we would take a, we would take an official survey. When I think of official survey, it's a surveyor who's signing off, saying he's staking his reputation on a, a survey. You know, whether it's Massey or whoever else, you know, in town would do it. I guess that would be how I would separate as staff, and I could talk to Ian about it, but, you know, to Paul's point, you know, if that's the direction that planning zoning wants to go, you know, we work for you, certainly we're, I mean, we can come up with something potentially, or you can guide us on what you're looking for, if that's what you guys work on.
I just don't.
Go that direction.
I don't see any fence that you can maintain from one side if it's four feet high, but.
If it's on the property line, how do you weed eat it? A chain link fence?
What have, what have they put?
If it's on the property line, you don't need to access the other side.
But if I chain, if I weed eat, and now the debris goes through to the other side, now it's on their side. So now you're, how do you clean that up?
I mean, I guess in a worst case scenario, because I can see where you're going with it, you require less man, so obviously with chain link than with wood flat. However, let's say that the neighbors really do not get along, and you're weed eating from your side, but there's still grass growing up along it, now the neighbor's going to be weeding along your fence, and his tines of his weeder hitting your fence and creating , yeah, worst case scenario where you're going to still have.
I'm, that's where I'm going with this.
I mean, if you're saying, hey, let's leave two inches above, I mean, that could be something that could be looked at, I guess.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
What's your, whose property is your motivation for this particular inspiration or idea?
I, I'm just, I don't have an inspiration per se, but I do think that we have a lot of protections in here for the adjacent property owners.
Yep.
And put a fair bit of restrictions on the fence builder, and I'd like to have a little bit more options for the fence builder.
So is it potentially a solution for a problem that doesn't exist?
Assuming, assuming that every.
Assuming that every property in Cassin, that this would be a benefit.
Assuming that every, one of these COPs we've done, that every neighbor has signed the access agreement, then it isn't a problem that exists. But I don't believe that's the case, so I don't know how many people couldn't get their access agreements and just move their fence back, where this would give them an alternative route, which granted is longer and more expensive, than what we're proposing is going to be the official route. Or then they could obviously move their fence back two feet, so.
Unless you can name a single property that this would be relevant to? I'm concerned you've got a solution for a problem that just doesn't exist. If you could name a property or a couple of properties, I guess I would entertain being involved in the discussion.
Well, I believe this would be of assistance to Mr. Norrie's property.
Okay. And that's all I was trying to get at.
But I'm not doing this specifically for Mr. Norrie, okay?
This.
Okay. This is something that I've been thinking about for some time when we've been reviewing these fence ordinances. And now that we're at an appropriate time to review the fence ordinance, I believe this is the appropriate time to bring it up. Thank you for your honesty. That was my only question.
Well, we can certainly take a look, and see if there's some options we can come up with, and look at other, you know, cities and see what they're doing, and if there's a way to try and make everybody happy, I'm always glad to do that, but I don't think we have any answers for you tonight, so.
I understand.
But I do appreciate it, it's always good to have a good, thorough discussion.
Anything else we need to discuss on this?
No, no, I've got all the discussion for now.
Should have mentioned upfront, this is a tremendous amount of work, sir, so thank you for all the time you put into getting us this far in the process.
And Ian did, just recently, it promoted to a community development planner. And Ian did, just recently, it promoted to a community development planner role, so you know, it's worked, you can have these shoulders, so you know, if you've got other projects for him, just toss them at him, you know. Thank you, Ian, it was a lot of time.
Anything else we need to discuss this evening, gentlemen? I don't think so. I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.